Say it again. Okay. It's hard because it doesn't show me my notes. All right, um, the order. Commissioner Berkeley, thank you, thank you. I don't have my notes, like it doesn't show me notes on here. Thank you. Commissioner Hanson, he's on mute.
Here.
Got it.
Chair Vice Chair Jones.
Yeah.
Okay, hold on, Commissioner Lambert, Commissioner Peacock, Chair Safran.
Yes.
Commissioner Berlin.
All right, thank you. So we have a quorum now, correct? All right, great. And so now we can talk about the approval of the agenda and the minutes that were sent to you previously. And we need to vote on that. So we're doing the agenda and minutes. So someone, yeah, we need a motion first. Thank you. Commissioner Berlin, motion to approve and any second.
Second.
Commissioner Jones, second. Now we need to take a vote. Yeah, any discussion? Thank you. And we're going back, starting with Commissioner Berkeley. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hanson.
Um, I vote to approve.
Prove.
Vice Chair Jones.
Approve.
Chair Safran.
Prove.
Commissioner Berlin.
It's all of us. Mm-hmm. Yep, thank you. And then we're going to talk about, like I said, we're going to go into the commission and committee updates. And then, since we now have a quorum, we'll be able to do some voting and then we'll adjourn. For the commission and committee updates, we're going to be reviewing the duties and authorities of the authorizing legislation and the bylaws. We're going to identify standing committees and their roles and responsibilities. We're going to review and update the OST commission bylaws and meeting agenda, and then discuss new membership recruitment for not only the commission but also committees. Now, I'm turning it over.
So, uh, the committee updates, so the purpose under DC law statute two one dash two six one is to establish an office of out-of-school time grants and youth outcomes and a commission or out-of-school time grants and youth outcome to support the equitable distribution of high-quality out-of-school time programs to District of Columbia youth through coordination among government agencies, grant-making, data collection and evaluation, and the provision of technical assistance to service providers to repeal the Children and Youth Initiative Establishment Act of nineteen ninety-nine and to amend the Confirmation Act of nineteen seventy-eight to make conforming amendments. So everything you see here, um, in color is what we are going to be voting on to update on this part of it, to include all government agencies.
Yeah, I think the main focus, because these are the things that are on there in the legislation, so the main focus is to make sure that we are doing all of these things as we're going through and we're talking about what our roles and responsibilities are. Please, yep.
We need to get back to our roots as a commission regarding our purpose and why we are an establishment within the DC government. So for example, it's scared about coordination and collaboration amongst government agencies and right now, from my management point, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the OST office has the bulk of partnership with the OST, so we're trying to get back to women coordinating across agencies, but we have OST, whether it is DCPS, charter, OST, et cetera, et cetera, and the OST office. So that's one area. And then grant making, of course, want to make sure that our grants are needed in needs of our students in real time, data collection and evaluation. So how are we doing? Our office personally is trying to get better at that, already assessing the data that is placed across agencies and to ascertain the impact of OST, not only by the OST office, but also by way of DCPS, OST, et cetera, and then of course, by the technical assistance and support, because service providers by way of institutes, but then also how can we do that across agencies as a unit or a collective as opposed to in some.
And can I just add to what you were saying? You started by saying like, we need to get back to this, right? I just want to acknowledge and recognize the fact that it has been Learn24-centered, right? And we do need to get back to looking at across all agencies because it's not supposed to fall just on your office. And so that's part of the reason why we are having this conversation.
Oh, okay. Also in section six, there's establishment of the Commission of Out-of-School Time Grants and Youth Outcomes to develop a district-wide strategy for equitable access to out-of-school time programs and to facilitate inter-agency planning and coordination for out-of-school time programs and funding. Again, going back to what was said, inter-agency planning and coordination. Okay, so, um, also in section six, this is the, um, the commission, and it shall consist of twenty-one members. As you can see, some are checked in green. Those are the members that we currently have. The Xs are the ones that we do not. So currently on our board, uh, Director of Office of Out-of-School Time Grants and Youth Outcomes, the Deputy Mayor of Education, uh, State Superintendent of Education, the Chancellor of the District of Columbia Public Schools, the Executive Director of Public Charter School Board, Director of Department of Parks and Recreation, the Chairperson of the Council Committee with Jurisdiction over Matters Related to Public Education. The commission shall elect a chairperson and vice-chairperson for each membership that we do have. What we don't have is at least eight non-governmental members appointed in accordance with section seven. Non-governmental members shall comprise the majority of the commission, and the commission shall draft and publish rules of procedures for its operation, including including rules governing nominations and election of leadership governance structure meetings and attendance. So, um, as I know it, uh, myself and, um, Commissioner Lampard are, um, two non-governmental members, and I believe Commissioner Peacock as well? Commissioner Peacock as well? Yeah, yeah. So, um, right now we're sitting at three, so, um, and we need to get to eight.
Oh, I was gonna say, this is Commissioner Hanson. I'm also a non-governmental member.
Oh, okay.
A ways to go.
Okay, yeah. So we still have, uh, four more to go, which is part of the, um, recruitment that we need to do.
Yeah. Okay.
So the duties of the commission shall be as follows. Set the goals and scope of an annual community-wide needs assessment and annual progress report, which the office shall conduct to identify and prioritize needs for out-of-school time programs and establish targets for out-of-school time funding. Within twelve months of the effective date of this act, at least every three years thereafter, draft and approve a strategic plan of out-of-school time programs and funding in the district that encourages inter-agency and community coordination and promotes equitable access for youth and families to high-quality youth development programs. And the strategic plan shall draw on the data gathered and analyzed by the office, including the annual community-wide needs assessment and the annual progress report to identify and resolve gaps in the distribution of out-of-school time programs and funding, with a particular emphasis on at-risk geographic distribution of out-of-school time programs and funding and program quality.
This? Okay, this is, um, what it currently says, but we have the proposed change that we'll be discussing a little bit later as we go on.
They're telling, right? Or very dear, posing to make a change by the language.
Both based on our last vote about that, yeah, okay.
The duties of the commission shall be as follows. Review on a regular basis the efforts of the office to fulfill the goals and priorities of the strategic plan. Review on a regular basis the efforts of other relevant district agencies to cooperate in achieving their strategic plan, including review of the allocation of out-of-school time funding and school budgets to the extent such data is available and how such allocation aligns with the need. Identify areas for improved collaboration, problem-solving and cooperation among district agencies regarding out-of-school time programs and funding. Inform and approve plans for assessing the quality of out-of-school time programs developed by the office, and the commission may use the personnel and resources of the office as needed to accomplish its duties.
Yeah, question?
The DCPS system, that information is probably available in our school budgets, which are now defined, but I don't know that we can afford to do a lot of that.
Right, right.
You know, we haven't said any more spurs or anything, getting us where we're at, but our school has as many students. The allocation must be x percent of that, you know, we haven't done any of that yet.
We're listed also, we'll have even more data on the first place. On financial numbers now.
For charter schools, you said? Okay. But.
That doesn't count for partner-funded work that is also government-funded but not allocated to specific schools. Like whether the partner operates at X school or Y school, whatever, you never put all that money together to see how a school is getting kind of a comprehensive allocation funding from various sources, right? But I also don't know what was the intended purpose of all of that.
Well, I think from what I think knowing that information is what's important for us right now to be able to, even if we recognize how each of us do, may do it differently, right? Because your allocations may look differently than what we do here. Like ours is by pupil, right? Yours might be something different. I'm not saying it is, I'm just, you know, and so, um, and maybe we need to think about changing. Because if we make some shifts, does that afford us to have more students? But those are, I think, the types of conversations that we should have, you know?
Part of you saying things like, you say, first rule.
First rule.
Like, it's getting, this is the budget plus this is the money, partnerships with this, my thinking. Get a full picture of that, you could really think carefully about to me that.
Yeah, agree.
What we already know, which is schools are, are well, I know, like very, you know, various sources and other schools are getting less.
Correct. Yep. And then that'll also help us to determine, maybe we need to have priorities in some of our grants to say we really want programs in this area. Correct, correct. With the sort of more data in that area, I think will be beneficial to us. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Okay, thanks. So this is regarding section nine and coordination of funding and reporting. Starting twenty-four months after the effective date of this act, the office shall coordinate with the Department of Parks and Recreation, the Office of State Superintendent of Education, District of Columbia Public Schools and Public Charter School Board to align out-of-school funding from the Department of Parks and Recreation, Office of State Superintendent of Education and local education agencies where appropriate to conform with the strategic plan developed by the commission and streamline and standardize where appropriate the application, payment and reporting process for organizations seeking out-of-school time funding from the Department of Department of Parks and Recreation, Office of State Superintendent of Education and local education agencies. So again, to, to, um, appoint Commissioner Berkeley, it just seems like they want, there should be, the commission is supposed to provide more transparency. Um, and I, I think this is what this is aiming to accomplish.
Capture more cross-agency, um, priorities for the plan, so let me know.
Right.
The different roles, metrics, priorities for DPR.
Right, DPR, I see all of us. Yep.
Sure that we can. Offering all the other agencies.
Agreed, yes, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, uh, this is the second part of section nine. Within thirty-six months of the effective date of this act, the commission shall submit to the mayor and the council a report on the feasibility of expanding the office and commission's coordination and standardization efforts to additional district agencies that fund or operate out-of-school time programs, including the Department of Employee Services, Department of Human Services, Department of Behavioral Health, District of Columbia Public Library, Department of Youth Rehabilitation Services, Department of Health and others as appropriate. Publicize its recommendations, the rationale for the recommendations and its plan in partnership with the office to increase coordination.
I do have a question. Um, has this report ever been done or this recommendation? Okay, that was just wondering. Understood. Right, right. Yeah. Uh-huh, okay.
And I also think, but I don't, I have not served on the collaboration committee. Know that they, I mean, her point is these other agencies. And then Commissioner Lambert has been more, uh, with the ones that were pretty smart.
That makes sense. Okay. It is?
It is.
No, it really is.
It is, it is, but these offices do have, um, out-of-school time programs, especially, um, for children with disabilities, Department of Employment Services and Department of Youth Rehabilitation Services. And we want to make sure that when we're capturing data, we're capturing all of, all of the data and all of the kids.
My point is, for within twenty-four months, two slides back, now we're gonna talk about the coordination across, uh, yes, here, running out-of-school time, I mean, we're still running here, right?
Yeah, yes, yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah. Right, right, yeah.
And I would even say we're in the pre-stages of being here because I, I don't know that we can say that we're truly here yet, only because, like I said, all, everything has been focused on Learn24 only. And so even though we attend the meetings, it's really not about our agencies, so.
Okay, so the, um, purpose and activities according to the bylaws pursuant of the Office of Out-of-School Time Grants and Youth Outcomes Establishment Act of twenty sixteen, the commission shall develop a district-wide strategy for equitable access to out-of-school time programs and to facilitate inter-agency planning and coordination for out-of-school time programs and funding. Again, pointing back to district-wide and inter-agency.
Hey, now we're going to look at identifying the standing committees and their roles and responsibilities. Sure, please.
Oh, that's a good question. Like there's a lot between what's called or in that new legislation, it's implicitly not exist. So I, I just would like to sort of call that out as, as a potential issue because it's just the driver here, doing, it worked, it's what we were set up to do, or do we then turn to a different master and say, no, these are the new things and set this aside? I don't know if all of that is intended for any place, just this.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And that, I'm not sure. I, I do know that, um, for our next meeting in May, we plan to have people from Truman's office attend so they could be able to talk to us and then we can ask questions. So I think that'll be a great opportunity for us to say, how is that different, right?
And I'm curious as to, as far as the bill, did they actually look at the bylaws before the bill was drafted?
So, yeah. This was me? All right. Okay, so currently, we, um, what we're supposed to have, the Governance Committee, Needs Assessment Committee, the Quality Committee and the Strategic Plan Committee. What has happened, um, since twenty eighteen, um, the there were work groups that were created, right, underneath the Strategic Plan Committee? So there wasn't a specific Strategic Plan Committee, it's kind of like they turned into work groups. Um, and then what we ended up having is the quality, the outcomes, funding and capacity and coordination and collaboration. And so we recognize the fact that here, there's no governance committee based on the things that we've been doing, right? And then there's no Strategic Plan Committee in and of itself. And so we need to start thinking about what that needs to look like for us moving forward, right?
They were quite intentional and were a deliberate change from the original of the structure because it wasn't needing the actionable.
Needs?
Needs.
Okay. Right.
How we were tackling the strategic planning and how we were tackling, you know, engagement, we were taking the missions and that, so I, I realize it's not a perfect alignment, but it wasn't, it was actually intentional.
In, in, I, I totally agree that it was intentional. Um, what I, what I wanted to think about is what do we need to change in the bylaws? So that, like, do we need to change the names of the committees and things like that? So, um, that's really where the conversation is going to lead to. But thank you for sharing that information. So this is kind of like a, an opportunity for us to like reset, right? Let's talk about what it is that we're supposed to do. Let's talk about where we go next, right? And with that being said, knowing that there are some things we're supposed to do, we need to vote on those things, but before we get there, we're going to talk about the, um, changes that we made to the bylaws, going back to when we first started talking about the, um, timing of the needs assessment. And I turn it over to you.
Yeah, so this is just reiterating the point that it's super important that our bylaws reflect what we're doing and are aligned to our duties as a commission. So based off what we voted on at our previous meeting, the change is here, and I'm not going to read it because y'all could read, right? We don't read. So, okay, so number one, we're just changing, um, from annual to bi-annually, the needs assessment, and then, um, adding the annual progress report, um, to demonstrate that holistic and that comprehensive view on, um, OST programming and youth search. Number two, um, again, we're just changing that annual needs assessment, because it will be bi-annually, and adding that annual progress report. Um, so again, what we've been discussing, but it's just crucial that our bylaws reflect and are aligned to what our role is as a commission.
Any questions? Comments, concerns? Say it again? No, please. And I love it. So would that be bi-annually too? You, you know what I'm saying? So if they, and we just alternate, okay? That is a good catch, thank you. And so then we need to add that it would be, um, bi-annually for both. Got it. Okay, and, and knowing that because we want to make some changes, just keep that in mind when we get to the next part where we have to talk about, like, what are we going to be voting on? Okay, cool, 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 cool. Thank you.
Clear that we're not considering doing our support and needs assessment every other year.
Right.
It's this.
Yeah, correct, absolutely. And I think we had a long discussion about that the last meeting, so. It's the wording. Excellent, thank you. All right, and so OST updates, this is what we are proposing to be the standing, um, meeting agenda. We want it to be like a call to order, announcement of quorum, approval of the agenda minutes, commission and committee updates, and then OST updates, which would be all the government agencies, not just Learn24. That's what we're proposing, um, for us to be able to do. So keep that in mind because we need to vote on that as well because we're making a big change there. Yes, I'm with you.
Bishop members for the government, a community nonprofit, right? That we don't just receive reports from the government at meetings.
Absolutely.
Organizations can bring their needs, concerns, ideas, posts, dreams, whatever it is, field meetings or discussion or consideration or whatever, so.
So, so that, that would be under public comment. Is that what you mean? Something different, okay, talk to me. Okay.
The commissioners that are part of it.
Okay, got it. Say it again? The commissioners that are part of it to bring.
It's a great situation all of that. I just feel like there should be um, an opportunity for some level of reporting on that piece of engagement, like then, maybe organizations represented by commissioners shouldn't just come and tell us about some, some things their organization is doing, but, but they should be able to be force of an agenda to raise issues that are probably up from the community.
Okay, I see hands going on, okay? Absolutely.
Yes, so we, just, yes, okay. Every day counts, mission, how we're gonna be reset.
Okay.
And they're struggling with a lot of the same issues, like how we coordinate with us. Bring in partners, bring in nonprofits, and one of the things that heard Debbie Merrick said this, it's like, really needs to be focused and centered. Every single age should be in some way focused, centered on parents, teachers.
Teachers, okay.
That's happening. And this work that's happening after school.
Right.
Uh, I think the same thing, and so one of the things that occurs to me, and especially around the structure, when you have updates. Language matters, which is really.
Okay.
We should.
Updates, all right, I'm, I'm open.
More of a place where we're talking about, for example, for this particular issue, like quality of practice, right? So if someone is, if a provider or a school or is saying, we're having this issue with, uh, our school's funding programming, we want to come, the commission is like, this is a great place for us to talk about it, and through doing that, OST, DPR, and Learn24, DCPS, and all sort of say like, here's how we weigh in on this piece of coordination. So like the model to practice presented by something that's happening directly in a school gives the opportunity to like discuss and problem solve something that's actually a thing, right? That's just a suggestion, not like gonna die on that hill, but I do think we should think about this. I would hope that we would think about it more as less as just every agency comes and tells us what we're working on, and rather like, how are we fixing and solving for the problems that people, fighters, in many cases, students, parents, are really chasing, and how would we use the great, like, to handle this for the people?
Generally. Generally.
Like to bring for discussion at the commission, by the commission, that maybe they. Uh submit that topic X many days or weeks ahead of time with a little bit of a background. And that, you know, like a little sort of summary of your problem statement and a sort of uh what I'd like. What I'd like your input on, what I'd like you to discuss as a commission is that, you know, and it could be. Then added to the agenda and made known to us in advance of meetings, so we could all be thinking about. Um the issue rather than having things like this written in pop of meetings, I think there should be some. Process by which a a topic comes to our attention. Um and that's different from the kind of own testimony that we've gathered.
It is.
I feel like that's a different thing.
Okay.
I'm thinking of that when they say this. It's only off I'm talking, but um. So one bit note, much I thought about it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Yep, and then it's done. Yep.
We we remarried it on what we just heard. And then seek the problem solve or address the concerns that have been raised.
During the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Discuss. Or what I don't know what it can involve. Is respond to our thing through while we hear. And then we get that step, so it's just like, okay, we heard you.
Thank you so much, right, okay.
Again, I'm picking on.
No, 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 um I I. It kind of reminds me of council halls, almost where like people would say something, then the council members, yeah, yeah.
So would this fall outside of the OST, like the government agency updates? Are we talking about something completely different or the same thing?
Many, community.
Responsible problem solving oriented or something, we're looking through and well positioned. I mean, anyone could bring and bind them to the agenda of the committee.
Right.
And maybe living then brings that to the to their report. Mission, so we also just tend to report on that stuff.
And and keep the conversation.
Items of the strategic plan to develop those topics. Transportation is one, and I see a strategic plan that could be a discussion of each family, something I was sharing with Dr. Lowe. If we allow the public comments to dictate the communication, it's gonna be a lot of. You know, those that are disgruntled that come is going to drive the conversation versus commission, commission being strategic. And their conversations, but I do think it's enough in the strategic plan to identify for each agenda, each meeting topics. That people can dig com- to provide comments on that can be reflected in the conversation that the commission then has.
It's a little bit like the way the school board.
I was just, yeah, that's what I was thinking, a school board has a specific topic and then, yeah, yeah.
I think it's also. I don't think we should think that we might need to adjust this in another eight years.
Right.
Like, and they're like, we should treat this in later, this is working to have this public comment period, this is working to have.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I I agree.
I'm not going to create that flexibility, but. Like, don't realize, I love, I think you're absolutely right, you don't want to.
Right, the, can I go rewind just for a second because I wanted to have a clear understanding of when you were talking about. Um commissioners that are on the committee that are like community based, okay, so. I'm trying to think through what that looks like and what that sounds like, okay. Right.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments?
I think that's a good idea because I, uh me being a um. Not part of a government agency, um and do a lot of parent advocacy, I I can see me um. Kind of bringing that aspect to the meeting.
Okay, that's why. Commissioner Hanson, were you about to say something?
Yeah, I um I raised my hand a little bit earlier, I've been able to follow the whole conversation, um but. Um I liked a lot of what I have been able to hear and I guess I just wanted to add my voice to that chorus and think. Whatever format we wind up on, I think creating greater space for, you know, community discussion and community comment would be really helpful. And then um I I do wonder if we also want to maybe amend the agenda where. I do think it'd be helpful just to have a very brief section for updates. Um I wouldn't title it like this, but at our organization, we sort of, we sometimes do like lightning rounds for folks because. I do think that it can be helpful to do super brief report outs where, you know, maybe each agency or committee. Has three minutes or, you know, two minutes just to give super important highlights that might provide important context setting. Um without having it be, you know, a protracted process and that could be the setup to whatever the topical or community comment conversation is.
I have a lot of ideas on the table, um and I I think that it's going to be important for us to be able to flesh them out a little bit. And then we'll be able to say, okay, I'm going back. To this does not have to be what it is for the rest of our lives, and so we can try it out and see how it works for us and then come back to it. Um to see if we want to make any adjustment or changes, okay, but um well. Well, we didn't vote yet, so I'll just keep going. Alright. On. Yeah, oh, no, because we we didn't land yet. I just wanted to do one more thing and then we're gonna land on things, because I, go ahead.
You know, we're not, we're not voting yet, but basically do get there, probably voting, probably voting off the agenda.
Got it, I understand what you're saying. Um so this is what I heard, um I wish I could fix these real time. Um there we're going to have the call to order, the announcement of quorum, approval of agenda minutes. In here, we also need to have the um public comment. After what? Okay, and then and then also on here, and we may not call it commission um. And committee updates, this might be um. Commissioner, let me make sure I understand, were you talking about the OST update being the lightning round or the commission and committee updates? Actually, it would be committee.
Yeah, um I think I was suggesting a brief section that is uh updates and. Uh the commission, the committee and agencies would each have a round to sort of do their updates. And I was also, a- and again, you know, it's just a recommendation or a thought, but I would probably have that go before. Um community comment um or the topical discussion because I think that oftentimes the commission, the committees and the agencies. Provide important updates that um can help inform whatever community comment or discussion there is and just. Provides important context for everyone to be on the same page.
Just wait. Would you say public comments after the updates of the mission?
Yes. Correct, yeah. Do you want me to um pull up a something to just be able to write it on? Oh, you're taking notes, okay. It's, I'm I'm a visual person, so I like to see what I'm looking at, but, okay, and so. Let's say it again, it's called the order. And then after that, you want. Hello. Can I, can I type in here real time? Okay. Am that in the PowerPoint? Let me find it.
Going to share in the chat.
Okay, cool beans. There, that's perfect. During this intermission, please get something to eat.
Go to slide two.
Slide two, um check. Slide, yeah, okay, slide two, here, right? Okay, great. Then public comments? Yeah, topical discussion. What do you call it?
I I think the approval of agenda minutes needs to be right after quorum.
Yeah, agreed, yeah.
Yeah, but I was saying, I would make sure to name government agencies to the updates section along with the commissioning committees.
Wouldn't that be? Well, there was commission updates, maybe I'm missing something. That's what I was like.
And then the committee updates is usually what we actually do. But I think we're, we mentioned that we're having about to.
So commission, say like government committee or government committee.
Yeah, and then I guess I've.
So in the committees, and just sitting in the different committees, whether it's funding and capacity for new to collaboration, often there. So that's the sharing out and what I have heard is, you know, what's going on in those committees, which I know that. We've talked about having better representation of cross quality agencies we're talking about in each of the committee as well as on the missions that. Flaplessly doing work, but then there's also not an opportunity to collaborate across those committees, right?
Right.
So there's this share out. Suggestion that the committee should have quarterly meet together. Right, so that, and so in addition, outside of the commission, if the committees are meeting monthly, then quarterly they meet together. Maybe that would replace maybe some of this needing to share out at the meeting. Or, you know, incineration, I don't know, but that is just some of the feedback. Because they're doing a lot of work in these committees, but then where does it go and how is it?
How do they connect?
Well, that's the topical discussion period, like. Prove to be the space where there will be some kind of cross fertilization, like even if we were working on. It might be the two committees are working on a common problem, but they haven't brought their info together yet. Or maybe everyone is involved in the transportation issue or whatever, you know, there might be something centered around it to all committees.
Yeah, I do think it is going to require everyone to, it's going to require a little more. Share to say. This agenda is a little different from last month's agenda.
Okay, alright.
Might say like public comment and response.
Public comment, you say every spot. I don't know why I have to go off and come back to it, but it's it's fine, I see it, yes, um. From the strategic plan, a topic or something, okay. It does.
To define topic is.
Right, okay, alright, so this is what we will be voting on. Yep, and so, um alright, and then. That, well, that's another thing for us to talk about. We didn't get there yet. We didn't get there yet. But we will be, alright, so basically. And I'll come back to that agenda in one second. Alright, so let's go with. Let's go back to the part where we were looking at, because this is the time for us to really start thinking about voting. But let's go back to the. Say it again. This is the first thing where we have to talk about the changing here, uh because we said, let me go to the one that's already. Updated, that would be yours, which would be like eighteen, that's what you were telling me, eighteen, okay, thanks. Okay, so with this, um we talked about the fact that it needs to stay biannually for. In alternating years for both um the needs assessment and for the um progress report.
Again, in alternating years, a progress report.
Words. Yes. And that would be in the top and in the bottom. Dr. Lowe are making those changes as we speak, and so I want to go by each topic, so let's do this one first and then if someone wants to say they want to vote. We can do that, and please eat pizza, I do not want to take it home. It was it, and there there is a gluten free one over there too, so. I was trying to, I was trying, Commissioner Hanson, I'm sorry you're not here for pizza.
I I feel so embarrassed, I rushed home, I was like, I got my kid early, I was like, I'm going to be all set and ready to go.
But well, and one of the things. Yeah, I was about to say, because I really like to be able to do in person quarterly or something, that'd be really nice. So I'll throw that out when we get to the voting pieces about the cadence and everything else, but. Alright, so we we have updated, okay, and so. Um it is set the goals and scope of a community-wide needs assessment, which. The author shall conduct biannually to identify and prioritize needs for out-of-school time programs. And establish targets for out-of-school time funding and in alternating years, a progress report to demonstrate. A comprehensive overview of the government-funded OST programming and use cert, does that work? I hear, yes, okay, um. Okay, alright, Commissioner Berkeley, that's it, we should vote, any seconds, oh. Alright, Vice Chair Jones, seconds, I love it, so now we have to go through the names of the people again, alright. Alright, Commissioner Berkeley approves, I heard you, alright, um. I'm gonna need help with names because I don't have, Hanson, Commissioner Hanson. Uh yes, approve, alright, who's next, let's go, who? Jenkins, yes, we got him approved, what else, who else? Yes, approve. Yes, you know what, I like this, let's do it like this the next time too, alright, no, thank you, everyone, for your votes, alright, so this has been approved. The next thing that we need to look at is, and I'll go back up. To the meeting agenda, do we have to vote on that though? Like, we just changed it, so. I don't think that's a vote. Yeah, there, we agreed, so we're good, alright, so. Each, yeah, yeah, so we're good.
Right.
I love it, I love it, alright, so the next thing that we need to talk about is, um, the committees. And the names of the committees within the bylaws, and what we want those to look like and to be, um. And I know, I am looking. Duties, yeah, 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 committee, committee. It's, maybe, it's up further? No, this here, alright, so, looking at the committees, as we said in the bylaws, it says governance committee, needs assessment committee, quality committee, and strategic plan committee. Um, Commissioner Berkeley said that the work groups. Were done strategically, um, and created strategically, the quality outcomes, the funding capacity, and the coordination and collaboration meeting, so. The quality committee are in common, the needs assessment committee to be aligned with, um, the outcomes. It used to be outcomes and needs assessment, okay, and. The strategic plan committee. Doesn't necessarily exist, so, um. Let's have a discussion around this, what does that look like for you, what do you want it to be, what do you want it to look like? Are there any things that you're, you want to hold on to?
Will demonstrate, we can update it in real time, the outcomes and needs assessment, because the project language, and we're considering. Uh, submitting strategic planning in place of funding and building coordination for operations, is that correct?
That's what I heard. Yeah. Okay, um, thoughts? Comments? Are we ready to somebody say something? Cause I don't get to say it, so. Approved, yeah. Any seconds? Second, okay. Love it, alright, so now we, Berkeley? I'm gonna know it soon, right, Commissioner Berkeley, approve. Who's next, Coast is not here, um. Nah, I'm mad that I'm starting to know the name. Hanson.
Approve.
Yes, okay, who's next? Jenkins? I approve.
My motion to approve. Got it, and then we have Sabra.
I said approve, approve. I love this committee, okay, alright, cool, thank you, thank you, thank you, um, with that being said, we are approving not just the, these are going to be our standing committees, but that. The bylaws will change, be changed to reflect these as the committees, okay? Alright, we are good on time, I am loving life, the next thing that we need to, um, look at as far as. Or think about is meeting. Meeting days, meeting times, meeting frequency, and duration. So currently, when do we meet? I always know it's on the Thursday. How, say it again? Every other month. Six to seven thirty, and those are, and, and, Commissioner Hanson, I need you to understand, in quotes, okay, um. Alright, so what are we thinking, what, does anyone have ideas or things they want to? That makes sense, as to when we meet? Okay, alright, so let's start with frequency. What are thoughts?
I'm good to go on that.
Every other month? Every other month?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else, Commissioner Hanson, what are you thinking, every other month?
I, I think every other month is good, and I'll just share a couple of quick, um, thoughts on to, I. I'm never in favor of longer meetings, but I think realistically, we might just want to plan for six to eight, um, I think especially given. Some of the changes that we've made to the standing, um, agenda. I don't think we necessarily have to go six to. Six to eight every time, but I feel like for planning purposes, um. It would be better to, you know, wrap early than to keep people late, and then, uh, per your suggestion earlier to do a quarterly in-person meeting, I think that would mean. We would propose then to alternate, uh, one month in person, one month virtual, um, more or less if we're doing every other month.
You lost me on the last part, you said to do one month in person, and then the next meeting would be.
If, if we're, if we're alternating months, um, it, maybe we want to consider alternating in-person, virtual, in-person, virtual. Um, I think that would get us fairly close to the idea, your suggestion of quarterly, uh, meetings.
Other thoughts? So, we landed, so, we landed on every other month?
I don't know, you mentioned quarterly in person, I like that idea, so, I enjoy being in person as well, but.
I understand. That is, yeah, that's, yeah, I understand that, yeah, because since it's every other month, um, but then. I, I would think twice a year. Twice a year in person is what I'm thinking. Yeah, instead of every other month.
I agree with whatever, I think that's.
Okay, okay, you know, Hanson said, okay, okay, I am, I know. Yeah, so like, if we have a, a meeting in January, the next one would be in March. Right, so January is virtual, March is in person, and then May is virtual, and then July is in per, yeah, that's. Oh, we don't meet in the summer. Okay, oh, I have a proposal. I'm gonna throw it out there, I'm thinking. Our first meeting of the year should be in person, and our last meeting of the year, that's what I think we should do, first and last. First and last, that could be fun. And we can make it a little longer so we can play. Cause I, I like games, I want to start off getting to know people better, okay, I'm, I'm done, alright, so. Commissioner Hanson, uh, we, it's not an official vote, though, right? Right now is every other month in person and beginning and end of the year. But that's not a, I don't know, that's a voting thing, is it?
So you have to choose, you have to choose one of the women, it's either the quarterly, um, every other.
Every other month, uh-huh. End of the year. Okay. That's all we can do. Uh-huh. Okay. No, we're not re-voting, we're not doing that today, um, we followed the bylaws, it'll be you to make a decision. Yes, okay, so let's start with Commissioner Berkeley. First and last, okay, and then we go to Commissioner Hanson.
I, I don't have super strong feelings, to me, every other meeting is just, it's the simplest for me to remember, so, I'll vote in favor of that.
Okay, no problem, um, Commissioner Jenkins? Or Joe, first and last, Commissioner Jones?
Uh, first and last.
First and last, Verlin? Okay, um, first and last? That's it? It's first and last. Vote some votes, yes, five, five to one voted. Okay, until then, the last thing. How long do we want these meetings to be, Commissioner Hanson said from six to eight, is what I heard. Anyone else have ideas?
Six to eight with a strong desire to wrap early.
Okay, six to eight, strong desire to wrap early, let, let, let me please put this on the table. I do not like going over time. I really don't, I don't think that it's fair to any of us and our families, right? And so, eight o'clock is our absolute stop. If that means that we need to pick it up the next time, then that's what we do, but we're stopping, or even continue the conversation in committees. But we need to stop at eight o'clock if we're going to eight o'clock, and I would say the same thing if it was seven thirty, so, eight o'clock. Are we voting on that, six to eight as the time?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think everybody's good with that.
Yeah.
The two hour with the hopes, I heard you, um, Commissioner Hanson, that we get out a little earlier, and I'm, I'm okay with that. Alright, so now we know, when we're meeting every other month. Last Thursday, are we sticking with that, that was the other question, or, cause that's what makes sense, so. So, the last Thursday of the month, six to eight every other month, new agenda. It's in person, the first meeting and the last meeting, and this is going to count as our last meeting for this year, um. When is our last meeting of the year, cause it's like in June or something, right? May? Oh, we're talking about the school year, is what I was thinking. Cause the, the next one is in May. Oh, okay, oh, so it started in January. Okay, so this is our beginning meeting, we'll have another one, you're saying in December. Never, okay, cool beans, alright, November or December, that's fine, alright, I don't know why I was thinking, I'm thinking grant year, school year, okay. This is regular year, got it. I, it makes more sense to me to do a school year, as opposed to the whole year. I think, yeah. Talk to who? I understand what you're saying, okay, so can we at least look into it though, to see if that's an option? Say it again? No, I'm just saying, no, I mean, we, and it could be me, I don't know, I'm just saying.
I also think it's a meeting, it's calendar year, that it's be in January.
Exactly, on November and January. Correct. Yes. I agree. Yeah. I don't even know when people cycle, I know, yes. Uh-huh, 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 this is special. So. May? May, uh-huh.
And then September and, um, November.
Okay.
That's six meetings.
So we have six meetings.
Are, aren't we gonna have a problem in November for meeting on the last Thursday?
Commissioner Hanson, you, you mean? For, um, Thanksgiving? Y'all don't want to have Thanksgiving together? What you mean, this is Friendsgiving.
I mean, if, if we're doing an in-person meeting, it can be a, a Friendsgiving, and we can all bring, you know, our favorite side dish.
No, it wouldn't be Thanksgiving time. Yes. And they're still very close together. Agreed. September and June. Yep, and ending. Yep. Beginning the school year in September, and then kind of closing it out in May or June, whichever month, we have a meeting. That's what I'm thinking.
We all sort of operate, I mean, we're so, right, about the start of the year.
So does that mean, wait? So we back to all virtual, like, um.
And so you could say with a minimum of one year, the first meeting in a year in person, you could always determine, have special meetings or others in person. If you determine like, a minimum of one, the first meeting of the year to be in person, gives you flexible.
But then for back to like, for November, yeah, to begin, cause he's, we started the calendar year, for the beginning, so I'm starting the, I think, yeah, I'm.
What I'm thinking, um, is. I still lean towards the beginning of the school year and the end of the school year, and, but I also recognize that there's a lot going on. But these are also meetings, like, during that time, we're gonna be meeting anyway, you know what I mean, so it's not like. So like, the September meeting, we're still have to be having the meeting, so, um, being in person, I think will still be okay, um. And then the same with June, because it's towards the end, um, the only question that I would have is, um. Does everyone like work all year long, or does that matter? Say it again? Okay, cool, alright, so, um, do we have to vote on that?
Sorry to come in later, I just dropped in the chat, I was gonna just ask if we want to, I don't know if you were suggesting just September in the fall, but. I feel like, uh, again, I'm genuinely not in favor of more meetings, but, um, I worry a little bit that if we only do September in the fall. That, um, we would lose any momentum that we try to start build up, building up after not having met in July and August, and then meeting again in January.
We're just talking about. In person, what do you mean, what do you, what are you?
Oh, sorry, I, I, I couldn't hear part of the conversation.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, we were just talking about when we would meet in person, the every other month is already done, and that'll just be virtual, but we were saying. Um, the meeting in either May or June, depending on how the other, every other month goes, and then, um. But we were saying, um, the meeting in either May or June, depending on how the other, every other month goes, and then, um. Again, in like September, when we start the school year off.
Wonderful, I, 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 I could only hear part of the conversation, I thought it was going somewhere else, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely not, we're still gonna be meeting every other month. Yes.
And to bring something in here with the communication around the room, we're talking about engaging the community, how that will be done hybrid style.
Okay, so how that will be done hybrid style, I would know in advance, and we would've set it up that way. But, because we can connect it, yeah, we can definitely connect it, um, so everybody can hear and we can hear, um, whoever's on there, we just. That wasn't the plan at this moment, and considering the fact that, yeah, we had some trouble setting up in the beginning, but we're good now. But yeah, so it's definitely doable, is the point. Other, um, questions, so Dr. Lowe, is that something that we have to vote on as far as that, or we just made that decision, we kept moving? Okay, so where are we landing? Commissioner Berkeley, look, I, I know some orders now. Okay, I'm sorry, where, where are we landing as far as the meeting in person? But that's what we're asking, are you okay with that? Okay, cool, um. Yeah, Commissioner Hanson?
Yes.
You okay with the, um, May, June, September in person? And then if I something more virtual?
Yep.
Commissioner Jenkins? Commissioner Jones, okay, me? I'll tell you, I love this group, you don't even know, everyone said yes to that. Um, were there any other things that we needed to say? Oh, what's?
In person, in, in May, it starts June, and in September.
I was gonna say back in the old days.
Oh, please, old days, come.
Uh, and members of the public came in person as well, if they wanted to attend the meeting, so it's not like. It's, it's like the free virtual, free hybrid option, but I think if we're gonna say that we're meeting in person. And the public could certainly come in person to wherever it is we're meeting, and when we're meeting virtually, they participate virtually. I don't think we have to stress about being able to engage the public virtually when we are meeting in person.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, absolutely, I, yeah, impersonate in person, like, to me, for everyone, yeah. Right, we have to think about, um. Where we'll be meeting, so that'll be the next thing, we'll have to make that decision today or anything, but we do need to start thinking about where we want those meetings to take place. I don't know what that means, but, okay.
Table?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, well, yeah, we can figure out the, the where, yeah, I just know the parking here is like really bad, and so.
There is bad. Right.
Oh, okay, alright, so right down the street there? Or a different metro? Okay, yeah, I, I, I'll figure it out, I'm a little, I'm still learning DC. Look, I, I, I look, I got here, and I was excited, and I got to your program, I, look, one thing at a time. Um, okay, any other? Said, oh, yes, the library, oh, that's a beautiful place to meet, I love that place, that's, yeah, I just went there for a program, it was nice, okay, um. Anything else, cause again, I'm all about like get the work done, and then. Oh, was that kind of vote?
The A to in person, but then the U.
Yes, I love that. I love, but we need someone to request the vote. No, we did not, yeah. Yeah, TBD on the location, cause we have to check dates and everything else, so. Vote, yes. The package. Alright, we got a second, alright, Commissioner Berkeley. Okay, Commissioner Hanson, do you approve the package?
Sure, I think.
Okay. Okay. And I approve, unanimous, yes. Okay, um, with that being said, um, that is, let me go to our. We called the order, we did quorum, we approved. That's, yes, yes, recruitment, okay, so, going back to the. Yeah, we definitely need to encourage people to join us, and one of the things that I think is, um, gonna be extremely important is. We get more than we want, right, so the more people, I think, the better. Um, now, everyone may not be able to sit on the commission itself, but they can be on the work groups and things like that, or the committees, since we don't have work groups anymore, there'll be committees, um. We need to recruit. Right now, we need more non-governmental members, and it was also requested, um, someone mentioned to me that. If it was possible for us to get a student to participate as well. So I, I think that's huge. Okay. I don't remember that, yeah, I don't remember seeing that in the bylaws, but, um, I, I think it'd be. A good way to, um, find out what's going on, and what's happening out there from their perspective as well, but, so we need, um. One, two, three, I think five non-governmental members added. Encourage, say it again? Sure.
We have a couple suggestions here, you, like, talk to them, like, I, I still don't know how to, I just think government, that works, but for the non-governmental. You also get people to put, they suggest, they, they suggest, they, they suggest.
No, that's why we're asking, like, for you guys to suggest people.
Yeah, so, so I, I can tell you about that process, um, I, I applied, um, because I was part of the needs assessment committee. And then I just applied, and that process was a lot longer than it should have been, and I'm just.
In January, and we encouraged you.
Yeah.
Just reached out this weekend, so I applied right away, and I've not heard back from both of them.
So you have to keep that in mind.
Okay. They do all the, yeah, we introduce for all the. Like, there are other applications, um, Commissioner Hanson has been asking for one, if the need to do anything to renew this role. We haven't gotten, we're social to land, oh, that's all, I'm sorry, I don't know, person, please, person's P O C, who has lived in, probably soon, because the position has to go on.
Question about, like, I, I put this thing in my head from the very beginning, that commissioners have been standing there, and I don't see that, I'm looking at, I don't see it in the bylaws. But it wasn't sure.
It's, it's part of it, cause one, a, another lady that I went through the process with was almost denied because she, she worked in DC, so she wasn't a resident. Um, but, yeah, I, I, and I think they're, uh. Trying to, I, I think Councilmember Henderson is, is trying to pass something about residency, so that might be changing. You don't have to be, it's fifty percent. Fifty percent.
Because I think it was something that, I was waiting to people from applying to a community, you know, people say.
A great question, you might be, you might be losing commissioners.
Are there any other ways, like, in the past, cause I know, like, at, first thing I think of, like, State Board of Education, how they utilize, like, social media. Really, and, and, and things of that nature, um. Has there ever been a thought of using that? Like, social media or? Or recruitment?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that we might wanna think about is, um, obviously putting it in, like, the newsletter, requesting for people, um. If we have like a little, what's it called, not just the application itself, but like. An overview. Of what the commission does, um, and then have that posted, like, if we send it out to all the commissioners, then you can put it. Where you like to put it as far as like social media, or, um, send it out to different people, whatever the case may be, that you're interested in having apply. So that could be one way for us to try to recruit.
Okay.
Let's bring it up at the governance committee, for us to update. Okay.
Can you say it again, I'm sorry? It would.
And I think that's why, I mean, mentioning, like, if you had a small blurb, I mean, the Wednesday bulletin, PCSB that we push out, going through all of our school leaders, I think that would be a good thing, if they could just at least see the opportunity. Um, to encourage them to.
I just have a, a quick question about that, and I, I totally support that. Are they government workers? Would they? Yeah, that's what I was saying, that, okay, cool, cool, that's what I was trying to say, cause I, I, I love that idea, absolutely, okay. Any other thoughts? Um, and so what I heard from that was, make sure I'm clear. Um, during the governance committee meeting, we are going to talk about looking at the application. And revamping it, or adding the new language that we have, and creating a, like, a blurb, kinda like a flyer. Requesting and to recruit members, and then we'll send that out to all of the commissioners, to be able to send out or do whatever it is that they need to do. Is that?
Intentional, I'll just, you know, really actively making a theory, looking for representatives from small nonprofits, larger organizations, it's just sort of.
It would be good to kinda put out there what we're doing as well to attract these people. Because this is their, a, a time commitment.
And they have to be clear, too.
Yeah, and then they don't even know exactly what the commission does, yeah.
I see her Jones, um, but when she was managing commission issue, it was the bylaws even share.
No.
So at some point, there also needs to be, you know, like, understanding what the commission is and is, and signing the bylaws by all commissioners, not our presentation. A Murphy's the only one that's strong, that, 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 I think by previous to right, so it's, when she was, maybe the home.
Yes, agreed.
That would be great, could that sit under a committee? Orientation?
Documents.
Okay.
Nope, you enjoy it, go for it, alright.
Vice Chair Jones, just volunteer to run the orientation committee. I would. Oh, yeah, okay, okay, there you go, there's the start for you, alright now, alright, any other? Sure.
And I can give them this update, but in the bylaws, there is a description of each committee. And I can work with them tomorrow to draft recommendations of what that looks like, to come to the governance committee, because that will also need to be included in the bylaws.
Okay, thank you. Anything else that we're missing, or that we need to discuss before I get to say what I've been waiting for all day? Alright, well, thank you all for being here in a very productive meeting, it's really appreciated, um, I look forward to continuing to work with all of you. And we are on turn at seven forty-four. I know, I love it, thank you, Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you, happy Friday Eve. Friday Eve, bye.